Six o'clock.
Yes, sir.
Good evening. I'd like to call the April 18, 2023, meeting of the Board Selectment to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic in which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our meeting is held live at the Town House Auditorium. Plus, we're recording the meeting. Is there anyone else recording it? I guess not. All right. Waiting for the... No, okay. All right, first thing on the agenda are the minutes of March 20. Everybody got a copy? Don, thank you for your update. Cam, I think, under budget. Is it PFAS?
PFAS.
PFAS, yeah. PFAS, not PSAF.
PFAS, yes.
We have PSAF, which is a totally different chemical. Used in most good chilies and stuff like that.
Police officer appointments. Second paragraph. Don asked Matthew what he thought of police officer standards. Sounds good.
Got Matthew correct everywhere, one T, that was good. Looking for a motion to approve as amended?
No approval as amended.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. We have the 75th draft of the ATM warrant.
I gave you two pages that contain comment from Town Council. One page has to do with the easement for National Grid. Apparently, when National Grid received the easement document, they discovered that they had sent an old version and sent to Rose this afternoon another version, which she said to me today that she's going to review it and we'll send it on tomorrow. So if you're going to close the warrant, we can just incorporate that before you sign it. I assume you're going to sign next week? So I can incorporate the new easement. And the other thing, Rose found that the accessory apartment zoning amendment has the wrong section and that there is already a section 611. And they would like, she said, you have to find out from the planning board what section they would like the accessory apartment regulation to be. That was a little late in the afternoon when I had the call from her. So tomorrow I can get another number. Not a big problem, but... So you have two pages there with her comments.
Well, the latest one I see online is 613, which was a temporary moratorium on medical marijuana. Didn't we remove that? Because, I mean... Wasn't that removed? Yeah. I don't think we can do anything about that now because it hasn't really been noticed.
Solar moratorium, right?
Yeah, wasn't that in general, though? No.
No, that was...
It was in zoning?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think we removed it at town meeting.
So 612 is marijuana.
Medical, right?
And then 613 is prohibition on marijuana. Quality monitoring. Water supply protection. That's been there forever, at least 20 years. So, 611, yeah. Anyhow, so recommendation 614, and then potentially, let's look at maybe cleaning up the marijuana stuff.
I will also review it with Chair of the Planning Board tomorrow.
Yeah, I mean, it's pretty minor change.
The other change was for the citizen petition, Article 16. Mr. Smith objected to what I had in there for a summary. So I just said to him, tell me what you want. It's his articles. I changed it to the language that he's requesting.
Okay. All right, then we have a question about the capital thing for the school. Okay, I think Bob mentioned last time, it's in the warrant twice. Both under the budget for the school, 69.0 in the assessment, and then as a separate warrant article. Obviously, we're not going to pay for them twice. What's the Board's pleasure? It's the opinion of Town Council that the letter was clear, that it was part of the assessment. It was just delineated or broken out to show you what the different parts were. And they view it as one number.
Our council.
Our council, correct, yeah. Obviously, I think it's looking at the Wolverhamm warrant, there's some real... That's their business. I think I have some concerns about how they're doing it.
If it's one number, if it's just one number, can someone from the town, the floor amend that number? What if someone says...
I would say no.
I want to make the assessment read, you know, a buck and a half.
Right, and I think anytime you modify, I think that's been our experience. It's all or nothing. You can't...
So I'm going to do a special vote inside the vote?
Yeah, but if you modify their thing, it's a denial of the assessment. Yeah.
So is the assessment a required number then?
Basically, they give you the number and...
There's no...
It's up or down.
No, up or down, right. Now, I think what we're talking about, there's a potential for they could send another letter anytime prior to town meeting. They've met the statutory requirement to provide an assessment letter by 30 days.
Right.
Yeah, this is the time when changes are made or can be made. If one town or the other objects, school committee can get back together and make some changes. But once we get an assessment, that's it. We are required to...
Well, yes, yes, but I mean, that number can change prior to town meeting. Exactly, right. And of course, obviously, the state is still in flux, I believe, right, Don?
Yeah.
So the question is then, if they come back to us and change the assessment number, lower it?
Right, that'll be the number we vote.
But then we don't have their capital needs on.
That would still be in their assessment letter, though.
It's in their letter.
But unless they change it.
But it'll be in the operating budget.
So say something happens along the lanes and they want to keep the capital line in there and we pull it out. Are you talking about removing Article 17?
Right, because it's already in the number we're voting, right.
But you said they can amend the number up until town meeting.
Right, so they would...
If they amend the number at downtown meeting to be $85,000 less, we don't have Article 17 on here. Then where are they going to get the capital funding?
I would think they would keep it in the assessment. They would just reduce the operating budget.
They would move to amend the operating budget.
Right, so the number that we saw, which was, I don't know, $8 million, call it like that. Drop that to 7.9, but keep the $85,000 for capital in the letter, plus the minotaur debt as well, right.
What we do has no bearing on what they're doing in our board.
None at all, right. And...
We put this on because there was some sense that the school committee was not going to, was going to remove the capital from the assessment and let the towns handle it differently.
Right.
All right, so let's remove it. I will remove Article 17.
Not really, not really. As we're going down, okay, let's just go down one by one. Reports, we're still good with the reports? Want to keep going on?
Only if we read them all.
Budget is, no prior bills. Still kind of have the...
Board of Health.
Funds, Board of Health. Nothing...
Where it going to come? Now, that can't come from fees? No?
What'd they say?
I still think we can go back to...
Mention the part where we had a grant funding it, and if that goes away...
With it, sorry.
It wasn't like they're going to get different. Stay pushed one way and they draw it back. I think you should leave it in safety.
Right. I think we need it in there so we can, you know...
Do you really want to keep prior year bills, since we don't have any?
I think it's part of the boilerplate.
And I think it's good...
You don't know.
Well, I think it's good, too, for people to see that we...
That we have no prior year bills.
I like the house, yeah. Yeah, I guess, I want to be in the State House.
The bill they gave, you know, where's our million dollars? Right. Okay. Yep, so it looks like... Yeah, I think you have to change B, Bob.
Where are we here?
Community preservation. You see the language in A.
Yes.
And I think the language in B should be the same. You're appropriating from the community preservation fund. And in B, you're appropriating from the community preservation fund as well.
Oh, yeah, we didn't put in there for...
Right.
From...
Right, source of funding, yeah. Yep.
Conservation, state highway, library, tree stump.
Need pictures.
Fire truck renovation, you're going to put in $10,000 for that?
Yeah, I think they had, I think they had said they did a lot of the work themselves. I think Peter Haxton, thanks. So... Fibular rig. I'm going to put that, you're going to be speaking on that, Don. A, yeah, A, D units. I did hear Scott mention a while back, though. He was thinking we need to start replacing them as well. So that might be something, I don't know. Or, yeah, timing type thing, or...
We don't have a dollar number there, right?
We have a dollar for the service agreement, yeah, but... Five point something, 556, something like that, yeah. Local match, I think we had a...
Yeah, 5820.
Yeah, okay.
It's in the motions.
That dump truck number from Mark includes a trade-in?
Yes.
Okay.
No, I'm sorry, there's none.
Oh.
It's just the, it's just the...
That was the purchase price?
Correct.
So it could be less than?
Right.
Okay. Got to be some value to the old one for somebody.
Yeah, no.
220 something?
It's 222465.
Okay. Now, I know there was a question about...
Remember, it was like 229, it went down to 215, and then they moved it up again.
Now, I know there was a question about in the motion about the funding source, and I think that was something between you and Dick. Typically, he likes to raise an appropriate, but by the time we get to the fall...
Yes.
He might be into, we pay half and then take a note for the rest or something like it. You look at the current financial thing.
One of the complications... Well, I put down in the motion for Article 14, move that we vote to transfer from unappropriated available funds or borrow. Problem is, to authorize borrowing, you need 2/3. To authorize raising appropriate, you only need a majority. So that's why I put down here, requires a 2/3 majority to borrow. So if we want to make it flexible...
Right, but you can't... But I think what Rose was saying, you can't have a or type thing in the actual motion. You've got to pick one or the other, you know.
I did talk to Dick again about this. And he's fairly confident that we don't need to borrow, so I can just exclude that.
Right. I mean, we're buying a truck now, whatever, four years anyhow. We must have this motion done many times in the past. Yeah. It's funny, you look at a truck for 200. 15 years ago, it would have been a five-year on the warrant for borrowing, you know, debt exclusion. And now paying for it out of, you know, what's in the treasures bottom drawer.
So actually, what we're going to be doing is transferring here, not raising appropriate.
Transferring from where?
He's saying that he, you know, he might be able to do something, but in the last resort, it's going to be from stabilization?
I don't think so. I think what's done in the past is he asks, usually asks, hey, I want to pay down quite a bit and float maybe three-year note, something like that. For the rest, he pays 50 down a year or something like that, or half down. But check with Dick, I think you'll find where we...
We can't leave in, or we can't leave as raising appropriate or transfer?
In the article, you can, yes. I'm saying, when you get down to the motion, it's got to be more specific.
And the motion has to be more specific.
Right. Okay, fine. Master plan. So this was my point. You've got a proposed grant application.
Yes.
But we don't know if that'll go through, so...
No certainty that we're going to get it.
Right, so to ask for a motion to appropriate another $60,000 on a whatever, I think, that's what I think it said, this should be explanation only, but no money.
Okay.
Okay, until the fall, right. I do have to say, having seen the three interviews, that firm was excellent, excellent proposal. So addition is what it is. Yeah, I think we should drop 17.
So just remove 17.
And renumber the following, yeah. Fiber optic is...
Robert, just going to be a discussion.
Yeah, Craig, are you going to handle that?
Yeah, I have a meeting on Thursday with Web City.
Okay. Quickly, so are we, like, at the same kind of place Wolverhamm is? Are they a year ahead of us, or...
They want a different route originally. They started putting infrastructure in, putting it in small sections where, we're not there yet. We're going through, I don't even think they've done a whole lot of it. Processing it, yeah.
They've been on it for quite a while.
Right.
They commissioned a study, start, and that took a while.
Yeah.
We didn't commission, we didn't commission a study, so...
Okay. Senior center, again, that's going to be discussion. Don Collins is doing the... Department, we discussed, just some renumbering, I think. Is there anybody?
There'd be a lot of people in that three-room apartment.
Two-room, two-room apartment, please. And renumber is required, that's good, yep. Easement, yep, just...
I put 10,000 in.
The key thing about that election, as long as DEP is happy with the polls, whatever they're doing, that's the key part there. I mean, don't get them mad about what we're doing with polls up at the cap landfill.
From what Rose said, it was just, I guess, an error on the part of someone at National Grid when they went and looked for a boilerplate.
Probably, sure.
And boilerplate easement agreement, they pulled an old one. And apparently, they have a more up-to-date one.
Yeah, I think it was an error with the bill they sent me, too. It was definitely too high. Don, yours?
Absolutely.
Yeah, right. Craig? Oh, that's right, you get, you got the solar, you've got the small bills now. No bills, oh, nice. All right, 150.
Put in 10,000.
Yep, and you made a point, you know, after, when we kick it off next year, it might be a project for the summer, is let's look for ideas. Let's start getting maybe a committee together, something like that. Assessors funding, they are...
That's at $16,000.
Okay.
They met last Thursday morning. And I got the number right after their meeting.
And that's raising appropriate.
Yeah.
School resource, we already know that. Is advisory going to fund the whole thing? I mean, in the past, sometimes they picked up five at the town meeting and then add the extra 20 in the fall. Do they think they're going to do the whole 25 at this point? I don't know if you saw the motions.
The whole, oh, we're down, oh, we're down to the, oh, okay.
Reserve fund.
What I've said to them is, here's a draft of the motions. Once the selectmen close the warrant and we go through this and we're satisfied, I'm going to send it to them and then it's there.
Right, it's only at the motion point. Sometimes they say we're a little tight in the money. We'll put 5,000 in on the reason appropriate and then we'll transfer 20 of free cash.
That hasn't, they haven't said that to me at this point, so...
And then we have a couple of attachments. Anybody have any questions on the warrant? I'll entertain a motion to warrant with the changes we discussed.
Will we close the warrant for any town meeting? Second?
Aye, thank you. So posting date, Bob made a point, you're waiting for a little language change for the easement, perhaps? Put that to bed. And then the, now, as has been done in the past, hosting's the important part. The signature page, you know, we can sign and you will hold it until it's appropriate to post.
We'll have the signature page ready for next Monday. And once you've executed the warrant, we'll get it posted.
Well, what I was saying is not to hold you up. You can prepare the signature pages now.
Yeah, right, yeah.
We can sign them.
Okay.
And when you've gotten the language straightened out, you know, now you'll have our pages ready and send out. Cam, I don't know if you picked a constable yet, but whoever. And then it's Eddie, and I can't think, who was he? Andrew Netherwood, yep. All right. 75th draft is... Is that the longest one you've done so far? Longest process so far on the warrant?
Yeah. Usually goes pretty fast.
Bond oversight.
Gave you a copy of what was given to me by the, by Joanne, the planning board. And that's a list that they have, that she keeps. As I mentioned, I think, last week, the planning board has decided that they're not going to ask for bonds going forward. They're going to ask for the cash, and then they're going to invest cash. Same result. Over, over time, they will get interest and they'll be able to decommission the ground-mounted solar applications when the time comes.
Who does the interest belong to?
That's not very recurring.
I don't know that that's been discussed.
Well, I think...
I mean, if the, if the...
Interest exceeds what it costs?
No, if the solar company, if it's the solar company's money and they do the proper thing and they decommission and all that stuff, who gets the interest?
Well, it's similar to, no, this is very similar to subdivision bonds, which I think the planning board, you know, used to get letters of credit and then it seemed like half the banks went out of business. The interest that that accumulates belongs back to the person who issued the bond.
And my sense was that they would ask for an amount that would be invested, and then over time, the interest would increase the base amount so that they would get, if they, if they got cash for $300,000, by the time it comes, by the time it comes for decommissioning, they would be somewhere around $400,000 to $500,000. And then there might be, in other words, you...
Yeah, I know what you're saying. You're playing, it's almost like insurance. You're playing the growth to be the full funding. I don't know if that's...
Maybe there's an actuary who can do something like that.
I don't know if that's...
I just make a wild guess, I think.
Yeah, but there, you're betting on the fact that there's going to be growth. And that's, you're playing with the town's money at that point. I think you have to fund the entire thing. If it grows, you get the extra growth back. We need a 400 from you. And if we got lucky and it grew to 420, there's 20 back for you. We got our 400.
Oh, it's worth the more questioning.
I don't think you should say, we're going to invest 375 and by golly, we'll get the 400. What if it doesn't?
Yeah.
Because of the market crash or whatever, yeah.
Well, the question I had was that in the bylaw, it says that the planning board every three years is to review the bond and adjust it for inflation. So what is the process for that? Because we have several of those, we have a couple of those that are coming up next year, I think, 2024. We've got one of them, we still haven't determined was only for a year they've ever renewed it or anything else. So how does that work if, if we say, okay, we say it's going to be $400,000 to decommission it and we had 10% inflation this year? Now, you owe us $40,000 or...
Yeah, so they need a tickle file to stay on top of that stuff. And same thing I mentioned last time, we need to...
Excuse me, if we do cash, do they say to us, well, we have the interest that you earned for us?
Yeah, passbook or something, right, right. And again, same thing, we need to get on top of the tower bonds, which are, I think, under our purview. We should have two in our files. You found records of one for SBC, but nothing for commercial at this point, right? So go back to the building department's records and find out what happened, you know. It didn't go to planning because it was totally in compliance with zoning. Maybe that's where it got dropped because planning didn't oversee it because it didn't have to.
I'm going to have a discussion tomorrow with the chair and probably Joanne. And I will convey to them, selectmen, concern that the decommissioning bonds, at least, should be up to date and we should have the review periodically for inflation costs and so forth. And that it's a concern of the town that we do not want to be in a situation where a particular ground-mounted solar project comes to term. We don't have enough money to decommission.
Okay, beat that to that. Keep it on the, either in your report or on the agenda, but probably in your report.
Yeah, did I, just want to go, she's got, she got the Thresher Road crossed out. Did they decide not to do anything with that, or do...
Yeah.
And I wonder how long that permit is good for. You know, the special parent, the time...
Two-year typically.
Two-year typically. Because you approved the ATs, it says.
Maybe that's why it's totally crossed.
Yeah, maybe that's why it's crossed.
Okay. Can we push, finish all the stuff and then, because I'm concerned about the time thing? Put the administrator office thing at the end?
Okay.
Okay. All right, we have a request from the VFW for the annual turkey shoot. And is there a copy in our folder here? There is not. Is it on the OneDrive?
You want to share it?
Okay.
A turkey shoot.
Turkey shoot.
Did you read it, Don?
I did read it.
The one concern I have with it, and, you know, obviously, we have this annually, the part about additional Sundays is kind of a blank check thing. And I'm really not, you know, the fall thing, we've had concerns from neighbors in the past and say, look, this can happen in the summer now when you have people outside enjoying their Sunday, maybe a bit of a gathering, and all of a sudden, this could be happening. I'm, I have a concern with it.
If you're going into spring and summer, too, I mean, how many people are going to be hiking? I think if you're going into spring and summer too, I mean, how many people are hiking back there behind access on the trailhead and stuff?
Yeah.
As opposed to the winter when last-
Right.
And the other problem is, is that additional select Sundays, well, one of the select Sundays, I mean, have forty-eight hour notice, they decide on-
But not to us, only the police.
Yeah, Thursday night, they decide to do it and shoot it on Sunday.
Yeah.
Here's the text.
Yep. And sir-
We're pretty restrictive on, you know, one-day liquor permits. We have to know the dates and times. I think this would require dates and times as well.
Yeah. Now, I think the dates of operations fairly consistent what we see in the past, September and November, although didn't last year, they also asked for like a special on Christmas, something, yeah.
That was a special date too.
Right, right. Which if they wanted to come back with a request for that, I mean, that's a different thing. So that's my personal opinion. I'm not happy with the, the extra Sunday thing, select Sunday thing. I mean, I'm happy with the September tenth and November nineteenth because they have had a good record in the past.
They've done it every year for many, many years.
Right. So. We are a dreary board.
I mean, we don't really need to take any action on it because it's not until September, so they'll usually come to us over the summer or wherever, those dates.
They do, maybe we would like to see them here. I mean, maybe that's why I came so early, because they wanted to get something on the books for the summer. If you would like to respond back and say the board has received your request and the board is of the mind that the standard operating season is the way we would like to see it proceed.
Would that be correct?
Yep. Yeah. Pam, you got just what we're saying? The board was good with the typical September to November operation and would entertain holiday ones as in the past on a per-event, request for that on a per-event.
Basis.
Yeah, yeah, with not forty-eight hour notice, with a notice at a meeting prior to. Did I get that right?
Yeah.
And I would just like to add that for the public that no actual turkeys are shot.
Guess we're not going, not eating this year.
Yeah, right. All right, Memorial Day Parade.
Yeah, it's the second page down.
They're inviting us to the parade.
So my understanding is Jared, he can't be his last name.
Sasson, Sasson, right? Really? Oh. Oh, wow. So Jared's back?
Jared is just gonna do a, he's working still.
Yeah, well, it a little more select involved in the past. So who is the current commandant?
I don't-
We don't know, okay.
I was expecting those were vacation.
Okay.
As you see, this one came in in February, so.
The other. Why don't you reach out to, who's there, Linda? Is it Linda? No. Who's the lady? Laura? And ask if somebody could attend one of our upcoming meetings. Probably next one, I mean, we're gonna be busy on the eighth. Yep. And we can discuss the Memorial Day Parade because we want to get out to the different departments and so, we don't want to be like last time. Personally, and I heard this from other people, they felt the last parade was a little too commercial, is what I was told. I don't know if you heard that from other people? With extra trucks and stuff like that. It was similar to what they see in Islam, what the Fourth of July parade. But some people, maybe, you know, people have been in town quite a while, felt it was a bit of a commercial atmosphere. Maybe that could be something we could chat about. But they came up to me with it. All right. Bob? Another grant?
Yes, this is a, a proposal from the firm, Howard Stein Hudson, that has been involved with our municipal vulnerability program to do the design as well as the very extensive application to the program to get funding to design the replacement of the Big Brook Bridge, of the East Main Street Bridge. We don't, we haven't identified funds. I thought that if you're agreeable to this, we would probably take ARPA funds. Replacement of that bridge is gonna be a multimillion dollar project. And the design is going to cost a considerable amount of money. We have already met twice with Andrew Smith, who is the person running this program out of the Springfield office, of the Springfield State Office. And while you, there are no guarantees, we are hopeful that we will get funding for the design. If in fact that occurs and we get the design done, and that's gonna be in the several hundred thousand range to get the design done, then we can put this to the transportation improvement program and get the new bridge funded by the federal government. I mentioned before that every region of the country has a metropolitan planning organization, which consists of members representing various communities in the region. They're the ones that decide which projects go on the tip. And it's felt that, given the condition of the bridge, that, and that we have not really gotten to the tip, that we would stand in good stead to, once we get the design at seventy-five percent, to get the project on the tip and, and get federal funding to replace that bridge.
Design at seventy-five percent?
Well, what happens is when you, when they get into the design, they do twenty-five percent of the design, submit it to the MPO, the Metropolitan Planning Organization, and then they get a read, yeah, this is something we think will be amenable to putting on to the tip. Or they sometimes, they'll send you back and say, well, you need to do something else here. Something else needs to be incorporated into your design. And then once the advice comes and they respond, then you get to seventy-five percent and then they put it on the tip. And then the design company will just finish, finish the work.
I seem to remember, and maybe it was a different bridge, but I thought this East Main Street Bridge had to have specific requirements for who could do the design work from the state. Is that this bridge?
No, that was the Rockadundy Bridge. They, they said that they're going to pay for the replacement. And then they said, here are the people that we, we, we were gonna have do the design, so.
Why are they gonna pay for Rockadundy but not Main Street?
We don't know.
A more highly-traveled artery.
And-
This bridge, whether it's on Main Street or large or small bridge. We are going to be getting southward, like, small bridge work, but it must need the dimensions, but large doesn't qualify.
And in conversation with Mark, he said, conversation with whoever's doing the Rockadundy thing, they're telling him, we don't even know why we're bothering to replace this bridge. Yeah, like, it's not bad.
So they, this, this proposal is for us to pay them thirteen thousand five hundred dollars to hold some public meetings and design and do the grant?
I don't think it's going to.
Well, it's right next to the, it's the bridge, the number, the number went up.
You got, you got-
You got excavator truck.
You had excavator twice.
We haven't used the twenty-six, I don't believe, for the well pump repairs yet.
I wondered about that.
All right, John? Great.
So I'm just suggesting that all three should be testing us. We're going to have a ground to widen.
Possible design of the cluster. Maybe.
I don't know. The light's on. What number is yours? It's on, and it's fading. It's gone out. Yep. It went out. Six is out. Oh, John, yours is on. Three is not on. Right, so the battery must be enough where it's weak in there. It's not. Swap the one next to it. Yep. Your light keeps going out, so the battery's dead in yours too.
Look at the light, huh?
Yeah, if it keeps going out, it's not connecting. Yep, lights out. What number you have now, Bob? Still not on. Yep, yours is on now, John. Right, the light's not on, number two over there. Put it on the other side of your laptop. Maybe it's, your laptop's over on this side.
I think so.
Put it on, yeah, that's it.
Bring it back up?
Yeah. Yeah, still on.
Okay. Kate, better?
Yeah, I can hear you now, John.
Over.
Thank you.
I don't know if that's better, but, okay. How about some tip money? How about this? You've got money left in the casino money. This is on the route approved for upgrade and you only wanted, what, thirteen thousand? We must have at least that much left in the first hundred.
Yeah.
Okay, that would be inappropriate because it's on the travel path we got submitted. All right.
Yeah, yours came on now. Yeah, don't touch it. Well, I was just wondering if there's a signal through your laptop and it's getting buried, I don't know. Good, don't touch it.
All right. Next is the book, but Kate, Kate, one second, please. Are you guys here for the VFW?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. We must have hidden from you. We touched on it a while back, but you want to come on up and we'll, we'll chat about it again? Oh. Okay, did you take anything or? All right, just checking. It might work.
Yep. That one worked.
So, are you here about the parade or the turkey shoot? Okay, we touched on that earlier and it was kind of the thought of the board, we're always good with a standard turkey shoot. You guys have done a great job, you know, good record and all that. But we weren't that crazy about the blank check part of the extra days, especially the potential for during the summer.
Right.
So in the, now, last year, I think, was it last year, you came and asked for a couple holiday ones as well.
Yes, sir.
Which I think we were fine with and we'd probably be fine with again going forward.
Yes, sir.
But the summer ones, I don't think the board was really, the potential for summer wasn't really a, a good look. So was there a reason for it or just more flexibility on your part?
Flex-
As far as, we were just trying to have more turkey shoots so we can bring in some more money.
Sure.
And that was really helping, throw a couple in summer. But again, we know there is an issue because people walk up there too and, and I know that, we know that's an issue. And we try dealing with it the best we can and we usually go up with a sign up the day we're doing it.
And I think during, in that late fall time, you probably have less, but during the summer?
Yes.
You'd have more, I don't wanna say conflict, but the potential for more.
Right.
So that's why we weren't crazy about it.
Okay.
Right. So, in the next question, we had a letter from you about the parade and we weren't quite sure, who's the commandant now?
As of June one, I am.
Congratulations.
Nicholas Amberger, pleased to meet you. And as, as it relates to the parade itself, that's something that'll be discussed with, I guess, Jared and Heath. Formerly handle that each year for us, but basically the only thing I'm willing to say is whatever you folks need, it's done.
Yeah, typically in the, typically in the past, up until, I'd say, last year, our office was more in charge of it or certainly had more input into it.
Yes.
And so it was kind of a bit of a sea change. We've always enjoyed a great relationship
Yes.
working on it with the, with the VFW. So we look forward to doing that again. Pam was gonna reach out and maybe we could have a meeting with yourself and Jared, either at our meeting or sometime that's convenient for you. So, whatever works out. Okay.
Excellent.
That's kind of where we are. So bottom line, it was kind of a no to the extra days, but if you came forward with extra holiday days, we'd be happy to consider that.
Understood.
Okay.
Yeah, because during the winter, you don't, we don't have the walkers.
Exactly, that's the thing. Sure, sure. And putting a sign up there. And Don was very concerned there are no actual turkeys that are being shot, right?
Well, they, we used to have chipmunk shoots for a while too.
Really?
We called it chipmunk shoot. And guys would bring their pellet guns in and we'd shoot it, you know, it was just at targets, but we called it chipmunks.
Did you know? Okay, great.
But the insurance company said, no, we couldn't even do it. The police department said, they didn't care what we did, it was pellet guns and they didn't care how we did it, but insurance company gave us our- It was pellet guns and they didn't care how we did it, but insurance company gave us our time on it.
That's good to know.
And everybody, some guys went up, bought special, you know, special ones of scopes and everything. It was still walk.
Like thirty feet across the river?
Yeah.
Don't want to miss it.
Yeah, get it.
Fly off the dog's back.
No, they, they said no, none during the summer.
Well, that was the extra ones for, like, last year you did the Christmas. You know, bring that forward and we'd probably be fine with that.
Okay.
Yeah. All right, great.
And thank you all for your service. You're welcome. And keeping in, keeping the veterans alive.
Great.
Thank you.
I was at Rick Green's office when we were meeting about a church. I never realized it. I don't know the one, he was a, he was in the Nuremberg trials. And he was a bartender on our VFW, I remember his VFW.
No kidding.
And he was in the Nuremberg trials, a head lawyer at the Nuremberg.
Wow.
I never knew that. Oh, yeah, it was, I'm still looking into.
I did just see online that the last lawyer for the Nuremberg trial just passed away. That was him. Yeah, yeah.
He was a member of our VFW.
Nice.
He helped build the provision.
Oh, Christ. Gentlemen, thank you.
Thank you.
Just go downstairs, put those papers back, that'd be great, thank you. Document. So, next we have Kate. You should get the skirts.
There we go, I was getting a little.
There we go.
Okay.
Hi, everybody.
Yes, yes. Hello.
Um, so I had sent you an email about One Book One Community. I've been a part of it from the beginning, which was probably about, I don't know, eight or ten years ago. So, every year we pick out a book. There's a committee, a group of parents mostly, and some of the educators. We pick out a book and the, the Polish National Bank in, I'm sorry, the Luso Bank in Wilbraham helps us buy all the books. Every family that has a student in grades one through five will receive a book. The staff members get it, and so do a lot of the community members, bus drivers, things like that. And it's a book for them to read as a family over the summer. And then we set up some activities around both towns for the summer. What we usually do is have some kind of scavenger hunt. In the past, they've just had little lawn signs. One year we had parts to a bike they had to find, things like that. This year, they would like to put up a, just a small lemonade stand. It's just self-made out of pallets and it's going to be decorated. It is mainly just for the kids to find and kind of like a little photo op. There will be no lemonade sold, nobody's going to be using it except to take pictures and things like that. They would like to put one at town hall and they'd also like to put one at the rec. And I've spoken to Carrie Joseph about that, so she's going to talk to her committee about that also to make sure there's, you know, everything's okay to do it down there. So, I just mostly wanted to check to make sure it was okay to do and if anyone had any specific spots they wanted to put it in. Ellen and I were thinking where our bench was for COVID book pickup, which is kind of between the payphone and our book drop. You know, somewhere over there would be good. It's, it's just made out of pallets, it'll be light enough to pick up and move and mow around and all that. So, I just wanted to get everyone's opinion and okay on that.
So, this is left out or brought in now or left out?
It's going to be left out. And they do understand there's obviously a, a chance it will get broken.
Well, that's what I was wondering, because where you're talking about, we do have a camera system outside. And I think if you work with Jane, she would show the best location of that because that camera is viewed by the dispatch office in the police station. So, maybe you want to like find a spot where it's, you know, visible for the police all the time, just in case.
Yeah, that would be.
What's the name of the book? We've got to see.
It is a secret, so we, we don't give out the name until they get revealed to the kids. It's usually sometime in May.
Yeah, I can't get like Cliff Notes in advance.
It's a big secret, we usually do a big reveal at the schools with riddles and things like that, a video and stuff. So, the kids really look forward to it every year.
Also looking forward to read aloud, but I think that's first week of May this year, is it?
It is, yeah, I, I just got the books in, so I will be delivering yours and Pam's soon.
Right, right. Hope I got fourth grade again, I hope.
Yeah, I think I kept almost everyone of the same.
Wow. Good to give it to Bob. Thank you, Kate, it sounds good.
Okay, great, thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, easy one. I wouldn't go back to that thing because we really, fortunately, just end with that. Get into it, do we have, Bob, is there anything else? Bob, give us your report quickly. I, I'm surprised, that first of you buried characters in my time, I don't see that. I mean, it's a bit, it's a bit cosmetic, but not, there is a bad part of the sidewalk on North Road, I saw that. Perhaps when we get into that sidewalk replacement time, if we, if we ever get that checked from the state, we can look at that. Right. Yeah. Right, so. Oh, there's, like I said. Well. Yeah, I mean, it's not broken, that was the way it was built, it was really cosmetic, I think didn't fit the place, but it's not like, there's a bad one on North Road. By where the tree came out, that's like four corners. But this is, yeah, but I mean. Yeah, but I mean, the design, it's not like it's, means it's deep anywhere, it's. Okay, well, again, let's leave it towards. Right, but the other question that we actually haven't addressed is, are we putting, did you talk to advisory about adding the line item back into next year's budget for next year's shortfall? Thought we had a sense that. I mean, next year, we're going to have that shortfall again. We need to add that one. Maybe we can't fund it until the fall, but we need to add that line item.
You need the FY twenty-four numbers.
It's that ten, three, twenty-four.
But if you have the, if you have the revolving fund for the, for the health, wouldn't it come out or not?
We're not sure of the funding.
We don't want to get the money for that.
I think we should almost, we should, now, Bobby, you're on it again, I think we should almost like add that line item, throw a thousand dollars into the dissonance fund. And then in the fall, perhaps in free cash, we can take it in shortfall. And by then, Ben may have some information from the state because he's a life of that fund.
Right, bigger, bigger.
So, that needs to be worked out with advisory though.
Well, we only, we only have one choice, the airport fund, right?
Because of the thing, otherwise we probably, well, we're going to need, no, bigger problem transfer wise is transferring for the shortfall in mental. That's going to take all our transfer money, right?
I sent a message.
Oh, no, I'm sorry, no, we talked about this. Is there a way that we can treat this as a bill and use the reserve fund? The reserve fund still has twenty-five. We can pass that a bill.
Even a portion of it.
Right.
Yeah, we did talk about that.
I did mention that. Okay, I did send a message to the new charter entry, work with the park commission, for me, and I've already gone to the park.
Well, I think, you know, Craig made a, a good suggestion that perhaps we give them the ability to go up to the transfer station. It is Technetown trash. But maybe. No, we're just at the entrance. And speaking of, speaking of which, we do have the Green Up Day happening this Saturday. Starting at ten o'clock at the Hennan Town Hall, the annual event. Thank you Heather and Karen. So, stop by, get a shirt, get a trash bag, and let's keep the roads of Henning clean. And Don, you had mentioned the, the park thing as well, right?
Right, how's the road, you know how the road we made out of the Hennan Park?
Okay, so that was through the Rotary?
Yeah.
Okay, I would just, I'm not a lawyer, but I wonder how much we can publicly comment. It is, in my mind, there's some HIPAA part to it here, so I would caution our, without some advice. Right, okay.
Yeah, that's what I did explain, that, I mean, we're, we're selective. I think it was an understanding that people were losing basic privacy.
That is, they're waving it basically. It's a question, but again. And again, if they don't have satisfaction with the company, that's when I think the oversight board then goes through, there is a process to go through. Like the questions about bills with the company, they brought it to the oversight board, but that's everything. Really don't have a selecting report, nothing of meetings next week after the COA and the building.
We would have been invited to select them to the next.
A good point, also, we are invited to, well, not we're invited, we know that Wilbraham Finance and the Hennan Advisory is meeting tomorrow night at the Wilbraham Police Station. And we've been invited to, okay, monitor, to watch the goings on as well. Either remotely or in person. In person gives us a chance to look at the dispatch center and see how it's going. And if the trip there isn't a bad idea. Craig, are you thinking remote or? But, um, something to observe. We're not posting because we're not expecting to make any decisions, we're just listening to what the two boards are talking about. And their topic is going to be the school budget and Wilbraham's, no, the speech, I don't know what. Their reluctance to fund the assessment at the level requested. If anything can be done. Okay, and quickly for next week's agenda, can we? You did. Okay, okay. Speaking of time bomb, can we put back on time bomb, where do we stand with the town hall thing? We talked about that. Where do we stand with Tecton? We talked about what Jeff's next step was going to be. Thought we gave him an idea for a little design thing, could he come back with that? We talked about the side.
Well, we said it, we said it.
Right, so, there we are. I mean, eight, they're tough to schedule things, we always do a town meeting and the election, so we can get them now. Next week, we're past the period for the thirty day notice at housing. So, I saw the email from Eva, we're going to invite the two people in for next week interview with the board. I would book an hour and a half for each, everything would be appropriate. Make sure you offer snacks, water, and everything. And obviously sending notes to Bob and to, to. Okay, last thing on the agenda is a discussion of our office. This is a continuation of what we were discussing last week. Are we looking for, I would say, reimagining, if you will, what we're doing with the select office, border health, town administrator, et cetera? So. So.
Just, you know, if we go down that road, the numbers, you're out. What it might cost. Well, rate it.
Um, I don't think... My recollection is we weren't really going to change to the health coordinator. I did suggest we look at repositioning the BOs office to have an assistant TA. Um, I think part of our concerns is, again, from the management standpoint. Craig, do you have something to share or?
You would mention last day about possibly... Power to plan. We can talk a lot about succession. That, what, how like... Also, we get that hard target. Scout panel there. I mean. Can you imagine? Has a high...
Hmm.
Um, so, a hard target. How do I... What? So, if anything is going on. I think it's something we should really consider. Help. Get people up to speed. So, too.
You know, with that, you know, we look at the town administrator role too. And Bob's capped at 25 hours. Would it be beneficial to the town to have a 40?
Sure you're in there facilitating what are safe. Projects.
Hmm.
Good conversations. This is a very busy, uh, uh, I was mentioning a while ago that I had 97 sub-overs. With issues discussed. Now I have 130. I think you've mentioned in the past, Bob, like you've given us breakdowns of your hours for the week. As your time goes. Some of your projects take a lot of time. Hold you away from the responsibility.
Right. We have, as you said, you know, we're running a 15, 16 million dollar business here. And to do it part-time, I don't think does the town justice. You know, we had five days a week. We started chatting about with Jim last week. We had the fallback in 2005 where we had to cut it back. But at this point, pretty much every department's been restored, most part, except for ours. And I don't think we're doing the town the right service by not going back to five days a week. We brought it up before, for whatever reason, personnel, whichever, we weren't able to go that way. We have an opportunity now for it. To do that. Like I said, we're budgeted for, help me out, is it 30 hours a week? If we did the office nine to three on a daily basis, we have five days a week. The other question is, we go back to, I think what Craig was touching on here, town administrator. We had a committee that recommended a full-time town administrator. We have. We had to go through, and we picked up you who is... I mean, the breadth of your knowledge and experience can't be touched. But we're not doing full-time. And is that... Like you say, you've got so much going on. I hate to say it's almost unfair to you to put this all on you with the limitations. And to say that, oh, I'll pick it up on Saturday and do it. You shouldn't have to work for free. No, but he's not sending him at 2:00 in the morning like Don does either, which is, you know, he could be picking him up. Right, Don?
Hi. Um. I really try to, I really try to hold off to like 4:00 lately.
When he's on the treadmill.
My third day on the treadmill.
Yeah. He's on the third.
I would say this, Friday would be a very quiet day. Anyone who works what I do, it's always going to be a quiet day. Because on top of the things that you do, there are people who walk into your place, want to talk a few minutes. And I complain about that as part of the job, but we take that.
Well, you look at all the departments that do work five days. And I think we're all aware that you can walk in and find Eva here almost any day of the week. You can find Wendell here almost any day of the week because the inspector department is five days a week. And it's kind of like, I want to talk about the elephant in the room, but should we be looking at a change, Bob? You know, you're at 25, you're capped at 25. And if we're saying that we need to be more responsive to the people, how are we going to do a cap to 25? Don, your thoughts?
My thoughts? I would like, I'd like to... I don't know how to go about this process. I like the idea of five days a week. And I'll get there mature. And I know we have to reorganize our office a little, um, uh, because there's so many different things that are happening. But I'd like to go down each of these, maybe Bob and I, or you and Bob or somebody, could meet with Pam and, uh, and really go exactly... I'm not sure what some of these mean. You know what I mean? And, you know, picking on anyone in particular, but I think conducts car each extra employees and volunteers. Well, is that really the health coordinator position? Or should it be just in the police department? To do it, you know, or in the, you know, the select report? You know, and we have, you know, provides administrative services to the Board of Health. The health, is that changed now because of the shared health agreement? Do they do this? I don't know. I don't know the answers to anything. Maybe there's more work there now that you've got the shared health. I'm not sure. So I'd like to really delve into each of these roles. Uh, you know, on the, um, I guess, you know, administrators of town, the town health insurance plan. I don't know what that entails. You know?
Enrollment time, things like that.
Enrollment time. Now, if someone files a claim, do they come through you to do that? Or, see, I don't, you don't know those particulars. So I'd like to, if we could explore that somehow. You know, I'd like to sit down with them and do that if I could.
If I pick and log it up to file a claim, I can get you right through the whole process.
You know, there's other things still, and, you know, I... Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
If they solve them, maybe more, some may not even be happening anymore. I don't, I don't know. Or they may be someplace else. You know? So.
For instance, nothing about the web thing because this probably predates.
Yeah.
The internet stuff.
Right, right, right.
So.
You know what I mean? And, you know, so, um...
So, we get...
You know, maybe there's a consolidation. If there's several things here about COVID, well, we have that. I wanted to know. So I...
But it gets to, our question is, you know, A, we've got a budget set. But I think we have the opportunity, we can still do it. The danger is, not the danger, the advisory has said in the past they don't want to do salary things at the fall town meeting.
Right.
So that's a bit of a thing, like all of a sudden. But I think if we talk to them and explain where we are here, they might just say, if you needed a $10,000 adjustment because you had to get somebody, that makes sense. Heck, we saw what Ben said. You know, we had a scale.
You gotta give the order to hire the order to hire the people, right.
Right. Right. So we're not talking, you know, we need an extra 250, as they do. But, uh...
I think we do need to move fairly quickly.
I agree. You know, we have some dates, you know, Pam, you've got a... Basically, 2023 is your last year, sometime in 20...
Right.
So. Um, you know, Jane has made known that, you know, she's trending out as well. Um, I...
But she's leaving fire then in July 1st, right?
Right. So, you know, I... Although I still think what you said before, is there a potential there, you know, they can work out something themselves, who knows?
Yeah.
But I get down to where we are with the town administrator role as well. You know? Do we need to explore? You sure you can't talk the state into giving you full-time? What if you dropped your pension?
And your health insurance.
One of the five you get. I'm not sure how many you get.
The rule is, if you go back to full-time, you gotta pay back everything they've given you.
Ooh. Ooh, wow, yeah.
Well, that's a hard no.
Yeah.
Won't be doing that.
I can't see that happening. Like 61A, like once you sell the property, you gotta pay the back taxes. Jeez. Um, so, but I think, you know, it's a hard conversation, but I think, you know, the town made a point that full-time is the way to go. And you've made the point, there's a lot of work in your office here. So, you know, this has to be back on for next week. And you need to come back with a plan.
I have a question.
Yep.
What works, Bob? If we re-envision the way that office works and the overall dollar structure here, do you foresee the position of the cabinet manager to be part of the next? Finding money?
Well, he's actually getting grants in the writing, geez.
Only would that be something that would facilitate that.
You know, what if you give you 5% of everyone you get? Yeah. Pay for play.
Some grant writers do do that.
Do they?
Yeah.
When you receive it.
When you receive it.
Yeah.
It could be a definite. Every town that you're doing that, a sole person in that home.
Well, either, well, the larger communities do it that way. Smaller communities usually work it out with someone who's already on the staff, either the administrator or assistant town administrator. Give them that responsibility, so.
I think we saw the conversation with the school department. They mentioned how important that was for them. Right? Gina had that role, and I think she still helps out with that, and it's critical. Because so much of their stuff, whether it's Perkins or whichever, you know, comes from that type of thing.
So you want to put it on for next week?
I think we need to put it on and come up.
Move fast on this.
I agree with that.
He wants to meet with...
Explore what the roles are.
Yeah, I just wanted to, so I'll do that this week.
Yeah, come on in. You know, which makes sense. All of us should do it at separate times and then, you know, come in with a better understanding of what people do.
Uh, that's a case how to start posting. We need to get people up to speed. Quick concern aspects.
You know, get a feel for... And it also gets back, you know, Pam, we'll need... Although there could be some overlap, but we can't overlap a lot because it's not funded that high. So we need like, look, I'm leaving at such and such a date. So therefore, we can get a sense, okay, here's the job description. This person could start then and maybe sit for two weeks or something. Is your ballpark? Okay. All right, so.
Then we use...
We just need to know, schedule the celebration, that's all. You know, get the cake.
We use a temporary help line too?
That's possible too, sure.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so let's explore the rules this week, put it on for next week. Bob, keep it at the end of the agenda. Okay, so that way we're not constricted by an appointment afterwards. I thought I had asked Scott when he was here at our meeting if he posted. He said they had posted internally. Didn't he say that? So... And, which has been their practice with police work. They post internally first. So you don't... You'd like some verification?
Well, I just think that it's very important to be very transparent and open it up to anyone. And I've heard there are people interested in that position. So I wouldn't want a decision made and then any repercussions for...
Okay. All right. I know that, I think we've gotten a couple of emails that there's a vacation happening this week.
Yeah.
I would like Bob to reach out to the chief and have the chief document what his posting process was with this position. Okay?
Okay.
That way we don't have to get inside it right now. You know, department to department head go. Anything else to come before the board?
Those go adjourn.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye, aye.
Thank you all.